Okay, welcome.
Welcome everyone that's joined us here in council chambers as well as those that have joined us from home. This is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, May 22. We do have a slightly revised agenda. I'll revise that when we get to the point. It's just an introduction of a new employee, which is thrilling. I shouldn't say just. But if we can all please rise, I'll lead you in the invocation and pledge allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the many blessings we have received in our city. As we move forward on various issues this evening, guide us. As we serve the community in the coming days, strengthen us to do what is right. And Lord especially, we ask that we stay mindful of those in need. Tonight again, we ask for your blessing and presence that it be felt by those who serve our country, as well as our public safety employees who serve our nation, our state, and our city. Guide and protect them and bring comfort to their families as they protect all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and leading in, Tommy Diggs, Battalion Chief Diggs?
Battalion Chief Bryant.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've got my reading glasses on. Battalion Chief Bryant, please lead us into introduction of your new employee.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's my great privilege to be here tonight to introduce the city and y'all's newest employee for the fire department, Mr. Thomas Diggs.
Hello.
Welcome, Tom.
How are y'all? I've known most of all of y'all. So, been a lifelong resident. I did, you know, worked for City of Newport News for a while for fire EMS. Sorry, I'm nervous. I'm glad to be coming to my hometown to, as cliches, but, you know, serve my community. I look forward to it. I've already had a few calls, you know, treating people I know, and I'm glad that I could be there for them. And I hope meet all y'all's expectations in the future.
You will, I'm sure. Thank you for coming tonight.
No problem.
For putting a face with the name for everybody out there that will see you in the future. I know you've done great things in your previous career, and we look forward to you continuing on with us. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
All right, next item is an audience for visitors. If there's anybody that would like to speak to council on a subject tonight that's either on or not on the agenda. We don't have any public hearings.
My name is Janice Powell, and I live at 306 Powhatan Drive. I'm a member of the City of Pecosin's Community Participation Team, working on the update to the city's comprehensive plan, but I'm speaking tonight as a resident and taxpayer of Pecosin. I'm here to request that you defer any action on the agenda item for this evening regarding the resolution revising and reestablishing guidelines for development of the EDA-owned properties in the Big Woods until such time as the citizens of Pecosin have had the opportunity to weigh in on the citizen's survey, which is being sent to every resident in the city within the next couple of weeks. Just last week, the survey draft was submitted to the Planning Commission, and it is going forward, and residents should be expecting to see that very soon. At the direction of City Council and the Planning Commission, a 12-person citizen group has met 15 times over the past year to get community input and ultimately generate a very detailed and informative survey that will allow for extensive citizen input as it relates to citizens' vision for our city and as it relates to the update to the comp plan. The feedback from that survey will provide the basis of the update to the plan. This whole process came as a result of the debacle that citizens, the Planning Commission, the EDA, and City Council went through last year and the fall of the previous year as a result of the Walmart deal at the Big Woods. As you will recall, there was significant opposition to the Walmart deal, as many citizens felt they were left out of the discussion and that the whole proposal came out of the blue. The outcry was strong. The citizens requested a more open conversation about important real estate decisions, and they wanted to have a say. And now that the citizen survey is going out in less than three weeks, I urge the City Council to defer any further decisions, directives, resolutions, or marketing activities in regards to the Big Woods property until such time as citizens have had the chance to weigh in and submit their opinion on what they would like to see, not just in the Big Woods, but everywhere in the city. The survey that is going out has been very carefully vetted and is going to allow citizen input on a huge amount of issues that should be really important to all of you. In our recent City Council election process, many citizens expressed their need for a more open government in Pecosin and for a chance for their voices to be heard and for City Council to actually listen. This is your chance. This survey is going to do that. The Big Woods is our last remaining chance to get things right for the gateway entrance to our city, and the city-owned property and the citizens have a right to expect to be heard. The process of getting where we are today has been a long time coming, and the volunteer members of the Community Participation Team who have spent the last year putting this survey together, going out in less than three weeks, deserve a chance to complete the process that we started last year before any further action or resolutions are taken on the Big Woods, and I ask you to please consider that tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? You can't both. Come on, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council.
Just your name and address for the...
Sure. My name's Dr. Joseph Legan. I am at 4 Inslee Circle, right here in Pecosin. Similar to the young lady that was talking before, I'm also a member of the CPT, working on what I thought you guys actually had commissioned. My understanding was every 10 years, the comprehensive plan's supposed to be updated, and that you guys had asked a commission of citizens to come together and try to work on getting the community's input on updating the comprehensive plan and to get the community's opinions on the shape and the future of Pecosin moving ahead for the next 10 to 25 years. We've been working on this since June of last year. It is a volunteer effort. We've met 15 times. We also had a open house at the, was that high school or middle school? High school. That was well-attended. We had, I think, about 50 folks there expressing their opinions, and we have worked very hard to not only elicit opinions, but to come up with what we feel is a good survey that will actually get people's input, so therefore you guys can use that input to make the important decisions affecting our community. We've been working at it. We actually had outside counsel. We had a retired professor who's done this for multiple communities in our area. We actually brought him on board to help us actually tweak the survey, and we actually had the final draft, which we're actually supposed to look at and be submitted by Sunday of this coming week. So we're very close to it. That is actually supposed to be going out to the citizens within the next four weeks. So I guess my question, and it's just from my viewpoint, I don't sit in the chairs that you guys sit in, from my viewpoint, my question would be, what's the rush on reestablishing guidelines and developing for the properties for the Big Woods? You guys might have much more information. There might be a driving reason that a decision or something needs to be changed right now that I'm not privy to. I do understand that, but from my perspective, I would ask you, where's the fire? Why can't we wait? You've asked us to come up with this survey. You've asked us to speak to the people, to understand what the people want, and then to give you that information to do with what you will. We're very close to getting it. I don't understand where the fire is. That's what I'm here to ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Randy Trust Trail. I live at 212 Beach Road. I just want to talk about the resolution as well, and I concur with Janice and Dr. Legan. I don't think this is necessary right now until you have more information. I did attend one of the EDA meetings, and it was my impression that they hadn't done all their possible research yet, so I'd like to see, and you talked about research in the resolution, doing further research, and I agree with that. I don't think it's necessary to have this ordinance right now, though. I think the research that the EDA does, or the city does, and Randy, you talked about using possibly big data and more information, I think that combined with the results of the survey, a lot of citizen input, take those two and see how they work together, how they jive, and maybe in addition to taking the survey results and the research by the EDA, maybe combining those and having more, like have a public meeting after that and explain to the public how the two are going to work together. So I don't think this is necessary right now. And I also just wanted to make a comment. Janice said that citizens were concerned about more transparency and more of a say in their government, and recently, you all know, we had a public hearing, a DEQ public hearing, where several people spoke about the legacy and their concerns about the legacy. But one gentleman in particular spoke, and he is on the, he was on the zoning board, and he made a comment that the people were wonderful, but they had a hard time saying no, and that he had the rule books in front of them, but they weren't always followed. So I'm concerned about the transparency with which the board members are selected, the length of time, the criteria, and I'd like to see some kind of education or more information about that. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for consideration of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular session of May 8, 2017.
Second.
Okay, motion made, second that we approve the minutes. Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canella.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is unfinished business, and this is a resolution making an appointment to the school board. Mr. Vice Mayor, you ready with the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Green. How is it?
Mr. Mayor, with the guidance from the Western and Central Precincts, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the school board with the following names inserted. From the Western Precinct, Michelle B. Sheeler, whose term will expire June 30, 2020; Christina F. Helsel, whose term will expire at the same time. She's from the Central Precinct; and the new person from the Western Precinct, Jeremy Jordan, whose term will expire June 30, 2019.
Suck it.
Okay, motion made, second that we make, put these people, two of them, back on the school board, and add Jeremy to that. Questions or comments? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Canella.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the next item in the new business is the resolution revising and reestablishing guidelines for development of EDA-owned properties in the Big Woods. Randy, you want to lead this discussion off with the background of what we've done?
Sure. I would also note that Donald Booth is here in his capacity as both EDA chairman and more germane to this particular issue, the chairman of the Big Wood Study Committee. Council will recall that last year, about this time, you had a works, or excuse me, a retreat, and the retreat was to look at that property across the street there on Victory Boulevard and begin to turn the conversation towards what we did want since, as a community, as opposed to sort of what we had been receiving, and there was certainly a fair amount of community concern about that issue. So it was to begin the discussion. A few months later, the council, actually in September, I think it was, approved the initial guiding principles document and set forth a process by which the study committee would begin to look at some of the five areas of potential focus that were identified by the council and EDA and Planning Commission leadership at the first retreat, and begin to work their way through that. At the midpoint in that process was intended, and they did, they came back and gave you essentially a mid-course debrief, which was itself subject to a retreat a couple of months ago, full council retreat, also including two members of the Planning Commission and the EDA chairman. And the document before you represents what we heard collectively, specifically Chairman Booth at that meeting. That's what brings us to this day, and Chairman Booth may have more he'd like to add.
Chairman Booth, you're welcome to add more.
Thank you. Good evening. Pleasure to be here today. Mr. Wheeler did an excellent job of summarizing our intent. We did come before you about two months ago or so with our interim report. As a result of the Big Wood Study Group, there were a number of questions that had arisen as a result of that. Subsequent to that, on March 29, we did have the retreat, and really, at this point in time, I've tried to summarize that as best we can into a resolution that amends or tweaks based upon the feedback that we received at the March 29 retreat, and at this point, looking for guidance for further movement of the Big Wood Study Group to, towards further endeavors of the group. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right. I've heard a lot of council basically saying this evening that they'd like to defer action on this. Is everybody okay with one month? And I'll tell you why I say one month. I'm okay because, and I kind of heard it here at the podium again tonight, and we did, the Planning Commission, not the council, did in fact put together a CPT to help them with the comprehensive plan. That process has grown legs into almost a year, 15 meetings in a year, and the survey's still not out. And then what I heard was it'd be out in two weeks, then three weeks, and then four weeks from members of the committee. So we had sent, I had sent my concerns to the Planning Commission that this process wasn't moving and that they were going to get into the summer to issue the survey, and therefore, summer participation was going to be challenging. So I can tell you what this guidance that we're voting on is and what it is not. What it is not is a rezoning. What it is, is a guideline for the EDA to then task the Planning Commission for potential rezoning, so the public process starts yet again. It is a pathway forward that was endorsed by the consensus of this council, and it is in conformance with the current comprehensive plan, so it's not like we're out there leading without the background. What I would like to do is negotiate and say, we'll give it one month. Get your survey out, post haste, and let's see what it says. I can go with that. If we're going to do something longer, then I think we should just vote this down tonight.
Gene, I would like to comment on that. The EDA is certainly waiting on us for a decision, and they certainly deserve it. They deserve that guidance, and although the timeline for the survey has changed, we have heard that it's ready to go out now and within a week. I don't think within a month we can get it out and get it back and hear anything, but I do think you would get consensus on two months and have this come up for a vote in the July meeting, and I think that would be enough time to put an end date on this because I think we need an end date. I don't think it should go on forever, and the EDA deserves the guidance, and we're delinquent in that. And so I honestly believe that we ought to have a two-month period, but I think there ought to be end date. I think it ought to be on the July meeting, and I think we should do it then.
Is council willing to consider reinstating the July meeting, 1st of July, to do this?
Mr. Mayor, could I bring up a point of order? We're having a lot of discussion without a motion, which is not legal, so I would like to see us make a motion of some, one way or the other.
Okay.
So that we can legally have the discussion. You're not supposed to discuss something before you make a motion.
Then I would like to make a motion that we table this tonight.
With an end date or without an end date?
No, it's a motion, it's a motion to table.
Now, if you table it, it takes affirmative action from all of us to bring it back. If you postpone it, you can set a date that you want to postpone it to, but if you table it, it's gone until we have action.
Is that the correct words? So we need to postpone rather than table?
Wayne has always told us, you postpone it if you want to see it at a certain date. If you table it, it takes formal action from us to bring it back.
Well, then I would like to table it until we have input from the Planning Commission on the, from the Planning Commission on that survey.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. To, for a survey to be good, it has to be valid and reliable, and I've had enough statistics classes to understand that that's not something you can really speed up and cram, you know, in. So I'd rather give them time to go ahead and do a good survey. Would lots rather have three or four months, but if I had to, I could compromise that down a little, but I'd rather give the group plenty of time to do a survey and do it well.
Okay. Well, the motion is to table.
Can I make a comment?
No, wait a minute. The motion is to table. You've seconded the motion to table.
No, I didn't say to table.
No, she didn't. She said table.
She said table.
No, but then you clarified what that is.
Hold on.
But you said table again.
Hold on.
You said table it until...
No, I said to postpone until...
Wait a minute. Wait. Never had to use that. What is the, what is the motion on the table?
She did say table tonight, and we have the...
All right, so the motion on the floor is to table. Okay? Until we have some, some date. I don't, so if you want to amend the motion...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion by Councilwoman Andrews.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to postpone the vote on this resolution until our July meeting. Second.
Okay. Motion made, second that we postpone this until July. Questions or comments?
My comment is that we're sending a bad message to the EDA. I'm not saying that I don't want to see what the survey says. I think the survey will be important, but what I'm saying is, if we give them new guidelines, and let's look at this, we are revising a resolution that was passed in September of 2016. If we find out some good information from the survey that changes this one, we can certainly change this resolution. There's nothing to say we can't. This is not, once again, comprehensive plan is not something carved in stone. This resolution is not something carved in stone. This is acknowledging the fact that we asked for the study group. We met with them a second time to clarify questions, and this has got everything in it that we agreed to at that retreat. Now, we cannot vote at the retreat, I understand, but we agreed to every one of these, and I think it's a slap in the face to the study group if we don't act on it. I'm not saying that that's the way it's going to be forever. We can change it at any time, but we owe it to them to pass this resolution or vote it down because if somebody comes up tomorrow and wants to buy that piece of property, I don't want the EDA thinking we don't want to sell it.
Well, buddy, I don't think we're saying that, and you're exactly right in a lot of what you say in that we do owe them a decision, which is why I think there ought to be an end date on it, and I think we do have a proposal for, to bring this back up in two months on the end date, and we owe them that direction. You're right. That's why it needs to be two days, two months, and that's why it needs to be an end date on it because this can't go on and on forever.
And I'm very happy with what the EDA study group brought to us. I actually wish this was in the complete format that the EDA gave us and that we hadn't taken some things out of it, like, for example, one of the things they recommended is that we have a market study done because in my opinion, this resolution is pretty useless to the EDA in terms of marketing the property because we basically told them, go after regional sports, public-private, high-tech manufacturing, and medical facility, but we have absolutely zero idea if any of those businesses would financially work on that property in this city based on our current market area, which is, I think, why they recommended in their report to us, a market study or a big data study. So to me, we're giving them a document that's going to allow them to do the same thing they've done for the last 10 years, which is seek out businesses that we don't know whether they'll be successful or not, and I don't see the point in, you know, in addition to the fact that we have no idea what the comprehensive plan is going to say, and that could come back and say, we absolutely don't want any high-tech manufacturing. And so, you know, for several reasons, I think, again, I commend the EDA study group on what they did, and I liked everything that they brought to us, including that market study because I think that and the comprehensive plan are two very important pieces that need to be looked at before we go marketing. Otherwise, we're chasing our tails again, just like we've done for the last 10 years. You can't market unless you know who to market to, and that's just how I feel about this document.
So the, so the motion on the table is to postpone voting on this until the July meeting, and I'm good with that, as is. I don't necessarily agree with that because this council knows exactly how I feel about what message they're sending to the EDA, and, but, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
But finding out about this right before I walk into a meeting this evening, that y'all want to abandon the EDA, to wait for a survey from somebody that couldn't get it out in 15, almost, well, 12 months, 12 months, okay? I'll wait for the survey, but that survey best be in the mail not two, not three, not four, but next week, so that they have time to accumulate the results and get it adjudicated and back to council. Is there a problem, Randy? Is the survey in a condition to send?
I'd actually have to look to the CPT folks. It's really close, is my understanding, and...
I'd like to dress up for you, Randy. We can...
No, no, it's not going to be out.
I'm sorry. I believe it's really close.
Okay.
And I spoke with Danan earlier today, and they had been working with Peninsula Data, the people that are going to send it out.
Okay.
So I, what Danan told me in the discussion was that they wanted to, they expected to send it out shortly after Memorial Day, so that is not inconsistent with the timeline we're talking about.
Did you get it out? This is the first I've ever heard that we are under a timeline, so I apologize. That never trickled down to us.
So that is not inconsistent with the timeline we're talking about.
Did you get it out? This is the first I've ever heard that we are under a timeline, so I apologize. That never trickled down to us. So now that we know the timeline, we can certainly.
Okay. All right, so that being said.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think that this hampers the EDA in any way. If somebody came to them tomorrow and wanted to buy the property, them not having this resolution does not prevent them from moving forward with selling the property in any way. And I don't know that giving them this document puts them in any better position to market the property, frankly.
Then why didn't you make a motion just to do away with it? I mean, not approve it. I mean, the motion was to postpone, but you're saying the document's no good, so that's what I said. Why don't we just vote on this and let it go? But.
Well, I guess because I felt.
We're going to respond to the motion and the second on the floor. So Judy, please call a roll.
Point of clarification, the motion on the floor is actually an amendment, so you have to vote in the amendment first, and assuming it passes, then you have to vote on the amended motion.
Okay. First on the amendment, which is to postpone until July.
Right. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Canella.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the amendment passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, very well. And now on the motion itself. Judy, please.
The motion, would you repeat that, please?
Well, it was, the, the first motion was to table until we have input from the Planning Commission.
Now, then the motion.
And that it was amended to postpone the vote until July.
That's correct. So that's the motion that's on the floor. So that's what you're voting on now.
Correct.
All right, Judy, please.
Okay. Councilman Green.
No.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Canella.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
No.
Councilwoman Andrews.
I'm sorry. I guess I'm unclear what, what we're, what a yes or a no vote means.
A yes vote means that, that the resolution, we postpone until the meeting in July.
I think, I think we voted on the amendment.
We, we voted on the postponing.
Now the table.
No, 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 no. No, the motion that, that's on the floor, first you had the motion to table. That was overridden by the substitute motion to postpone. The post, the postpone motion passed.
Okay.
So we are now voting on the postpone motion until July. If, if there was confusion.
It is confusing.
Then we will take the, we will revote based on that. Okay? Does everybody understand the motion on the floor?
No.
All right. A yes vote, a yes vote moves this resolution to the meeting in July. A no vote means that we're going to look for another motion, to either adopt it or turn it down.
Oh, okay. The, the, so if, if we vote yes, then we will vote on this on, in July.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Then my no, my, I'm a yes.
Well, wait a minute. She's going to recall the roll. All right, Judy, recall the roll. Does everybody understand before, before I have to go again? Okay.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
No.
Councilman Canella.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to one.
Okay, thank you very much. Comments of the city manager?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Okay, very well. Directors of council, Councilman Hucks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to make my feeling on this perfectly clear. I think this has gone on quite some time. I know a lot of people have put a lot of effort into it. This was all announced in advance, and I consider and I supported postponing the vote until July. I consider that a compromise, and I support that, but it must be sent out so we can have the results tabulated, so we can take a vote at the July council meeting. Thank you.
Councilman Green?
Just to remind everybody, tomorrow is Food Bank Day, from 10 to 1:00 at the old municipal building. There'll be a representative there from the Community Action Group, I think is what the name is. She called me this morning, and they are looking to inform veterans of services they can get from them. And also, she wondered, she wanted to know if we were serving any homeless veterans, and I told her no. But, like I say, it's 10 to 1:00, municipal building, the old municipal building, and she will have some pamphlets and flyers and be willing to talk to the veterans. Thank you.
Oh, may I? Councilman Green, I missed the, the name of the group. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure exactly. I, I think it's called Community Action Group. They're, they're based in Newport News on Washington Avenue, and they follow the food bank distribution centers to help veterans.
Councilman Canella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to start by saying I appreciate greatly what you, Chairman Booth, and other members of the EDA have done, and especially the Planning Commission. But this council commissioned a group of citizens to seek input from the citizenry. And had we not agreed to postpone this, I want to make my position very clear, I would have agreed to pass this resolution. Like the mayor said, we have discussed it, and it was a consolidation of the feelings of the members of council and the EDA and the Planning Commission. However, in light of a citizen survey being sent out in this community in a number of weeks, I cannot consciously vote on something knowing that the opinions of the citizens of this community is waiting for me. And like we said, this has been a year-long process, and I cannot foresee two months making much of a difference. To my knowledge, we do not have anyone interested in that property as it stands today. Therefore, two months will not hurt a thing. And we are here for one reason, and that is to represent the people in this community. And knowing that they will send us their input in just a couple of weeks means more to me than, than I can put into words. That's why we're here. However, that survey information needs to be sent out soon and to this council well before that July meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Southall.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Booth, thank you very much for y'all's hard work, yours and the, and the rest of the group. You do deserve direction from this council, okay? I apologize that it's taking so long, but you will have it in July, okay? I think I've said enough on the rest of it. Thank everybody at home and the people who came here tonight to participate in their government, and this is the shortest meeting that's made me so tired in a long time.
Councilwoman Andrews.
I as well want to thank the EDA study group. I think they did a marvelous job at what they did. I liked a lot of their input, and I did mention at the retreat the same things I did tonight, that I think they need a market study in order to actually market and, and have, they need more than this resolution, and I think we need input from the comprehensive team, which I expressed at that, at that retreat as well. And I just want to thank the people that came and spoke tonight. I think it's really important that you take an active interest in your city government.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Just a couple of quick things. One way to get good ideas is to get a whole bunch of ideas and then look them over, and I think that this is a good, a good start toward that. And, no, that's all.
Okay, let's talk about some of the things that we didn't talk about tonight. First is, I want to send a personal thank you to Robin Bellamy for her work on the, with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. So basically, I don't know if y'all have seen, but our emergency plan was adopted again. There's funding in here for some of our projects, which means that there's a federal match, so really appreciate the work that she has done on this. Also, like to say that the, I appreciate the CERT team working with the churches, local churches, to pull off a block party here in another couple of weeks, and I was astounded by the following for the Kiwanis Bowl barbecue this weekend. They sold out before, I think they even planned to. So they always do that with city in mind, and I really appreciate what they've done. As far as anything else, we do have a work session starting in, I think it's now August, with the school board. I think that's set up, and that'll be to talk about some of the more important issues regarding our city, and that's all I've got. So I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Suck it.
Okay, Judy, please. That's all, I can take the vote count.
Who made the motion? Green and Freeman. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Canella.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.